Meeting the board, we implicate choice of allegiance. I. 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 And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, first up is the consent agenda. Have all members had a chance to review it?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve a second.
Second by Shay, second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. First up for scheduled sessions, discussion and or decision on disaster recovery response and amending disaster declaration. All right, Doug, we'll turn it over to you.
Worry, worry. Well, if you want to go ahead and we can just knock the extension off of the table real quick.
Don't move. Second.
How come it's not during budget time?
You got that sent.
You don't come in.
Oh, I know. I know. All right, well, obviously things. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a vote. All right, all those in favor of extending that proclamation of desert disaster emergency for thirty days to July twenty fifth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right.
All right, now. Obviously, things have upticked for us here in the last couple of days with the the water coming south towards us. Still on tap after our noon operational meeting, or whenever we did that yesterday, it's all running together again. They upped the forecast from thirty-five point one foot to thirty-five three. Negligible, but looking at this morning's hydrographs and everything, we're actually coming in at about two foot lower than what was projected for this time today. There's been some validated reports in the media that there was a levy failure up in Monona County. At some point, there's rumors of a couple others, but nothing, nothing's been validated north of us.
Is that slowing the water this way?
You know, I'm not near smart enough to figure out how it might impact us or not. I would say it's a consideration, but I certainly wouldn't ever change any preparedness or operational activities based on that, because you just don't know how it's gonna react and get back into the system, right? Eventually, it's gonna come back in. So we'll just see how that shakes out. This will be updating forecasts now. I sent out a message to response partners a little while ago. The Weather Service will be doing a river forecast update briefing for all of us at noon. We'll have that going in the E O C. And then for the agencies that are there, we'll just do a quick operational touch point and see what's, what's, what their status is right now. I know as far as yesterday, we got a good press release out. The flood website is up and running. That's went yesterday, has all the current validated information. Council Bluffs Police Department was able to make contact with people in their area that we put involuntary evacuation notice. The Sheriff's Office is just about finished up going to all the properties in the northwest part of Potawatomi County. G I S supported them with getting us just parcel addresses. We're just gonna check them all, even though we know some of them don't have residential properties on it or residents anymore. So they've got a, they've got a tracking sheet up there that they'll, they should have back down to the E O C here in an hour. They should be pretty much finished with those operations. So some, you know, obviously parks and some roads have started being closed. And all the public works and county roads folks for the county stuff have a lot of stuff prepositioned to start dealing with roads as necessary. Rumors started hitting social media late yesterday afternoon, early evening about, you know, we're gonna close this interstate down at this time and whatever. Those weren't accurate. But D O T did put out a press release like after ten P M. last night, based on stuff that they were going to hit, you know, twenty-nine, eight-eighty at Loveland and then, you know, six-eighty in the Crescent area, like they had talked about in our meeting yesterday, around eleven o'clock this morning. In speaking with the district engineer, they're kind of in a holding pattern on that because we're two foot lower than what we thought. So they don't want to close it too early, but they also, you know, want to have plenty of time so, so people are aware. So it's kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern, but I imagine, you know, sometime between the planned eleven o'clock timeframe to, you know, seven P M. or so, we might see some movement on that. But they're gonna make that decision after they get updated river forecast information. So they were working on doing that now. Outside of that, everything else is, is running and working. Of course, on the county side, the Narrows Park is closed down. State closed down Wilson Island Campground. We knew that yesterday. So, so pretty much all of our impacted populations in the unincorporated areas have been alerted, or we've had a deputy try and make contact face to face at their property. We do know that we have water over the roadways in the Goose Haven community. And that's being checked on by, by the Sheriff's Office and by Crescent Fire Department fairly regularly. So there are still a couple people up there, but, but the water was coming through and, and we know, you know, that's how it goes. Some people go, some people stay. But at least we know that. We know, know what's going on. So the, the machine is, the machine is moving and operating. So just a lot of stuff going on today. I know Fremont County was up to get some supplies. They grabbed one of our sandbagging machines and about ten thousand sandbags from us this morning. We have a request to support Harrison County with about ten, twelve thousand sandbags. That mission's on hold until they determine what they need to do. So, so we're, we're getting things done in county and supporting others around us with some of the state assets that we manage for events like this and, and other things we have access to. So outside of that, that's kind of really the latest on flood activities, at least from what I remember. Also, yesterday, the governor did put us under a new declaration over here in Western Iowa, the counties along the Missouri River. So we have access to state assets if we need some assistance and those kind of things. So we've also, you know, put out the, the reminder to everybody to be tracking their time specific to this event, equipment, all that good stuff, just like we've all been doing essentially since the beginning or in, in part of April. Other than that, I know the Corps of Engineers is in meeting with the Council Bluffs Engineer and Mayor's Office this morning. I also have FEMA, some FEMA financial specialists and some state folks in Minden right now. Just having to sit down with the city clerk up there to kind of help her get ready for the potential public assistance announcement, which is still pending, but hopefully they'll get to it. It's been a little busy all over, so I think there are a little backlog with declaration requests at FEMA headquarters right now. So we have that going. We'll have some long-term recovery meetings up in Minden tomorrow. I sent you guys a message on that. So please be there if you would like to. And we've got a meeting with state homeland security and all the emergency managers this morning at ten-thirty. And then, of course, our weather update and operations briefing at noon in the E O C, if you would like to attend. And I know I'm probably forgetting about twenty things, but everything's going. County Craig, Craig is, is integrated and helping out with public information again, just like we've done all year so far. That's, that's working really well. We're certainly tracking some lessons learned on the, the information management front. It's gonna improve things down the road. And have some ideas that, that hopefully will, will get approved tomorrow night when I meet with my commission. So outside of that, are there any questions I can answer right now? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a mobile disaster recovery center for the tornado response stuff coming back into the county towards the end of this week or beginning of next week. And a couple of my staff will be going out to the Oakland Community Center today to go around with FEMA to do a site inspection to set up another agricultural disaster recovery center at that location, probably within the next week or so.
Did you get many from Crescent? Well, set up?
When it was in Council Bluffs, I think they had, I don't have the numbers verified, but they had, they had thirty-two plus people physically come to that site. So it was well, it was well worth it. So I think, I'm pretty sure that that's where they're coming back to this time, from what I understand. And then when they make the cycle again, we'll, we'll likely rotate it back to Minden for another shot up there.
Thank you, Doug.
Sir.
Are there any current public utilities being affected right now? Electricity?
I don't, I don't have any, any reports. I haven't looked at their, you know, a lot of times we just use their public facing outage site just to kind of track and see, and if it starts growing, we'll make contact. I've got Black Hills Energy, Mid America Energy, they're all in our operational communications. They haven't provided any updates and I, I haven't been made aware of any flood forced outages or anything like that right now.
So we hear about the railroad bridge that collapsed. Are there any other bridges that are jeopardy that you know of?
Not, not that I'm aware of right now. You know, we've, we've had some of the ones closer down here that have been through a little more and faster flowing water than this. And, and right now, there's no, no concern on that front. But yeah, that was up in South Sioux City, a train, a train bridge crossing.
Doug, when you look at your, if you look directly to your website, they, they see that chart where but says at this level is minor flooding and this level is moderate flooding. If you say the river, if they say the river's gonna peak at thirty-five, does that put it over eight-eighty? Well, is it six-eighty or eighty?
Six-eighty by Crescent, eight-eighty by Loveland.
Six-eighty.
I, I would, without looking at the impact, the, the direct impact numbers that are kind of listed there as well, you know what? I actually have it with me.
If it makes thirty-five feet, that's.
I, I mean, it should. I mean, we're gonna have it. That's why they're looking at, at closing those areas sometime today, based on the updated forecast anyway. So, so yes, we will have closures on those sections of interstates that, that we know of, right? So the sixty-seven Honey Creek kind of a deal. You know, up closer towards Loveland and the interchange, you know, that you're talking about as well. So it should. But again, like I, you know, I kind of mentioned yesterday to everybody, if there's any silver lining at all to this particular flood event is that it's not gonna be like eleven or nineteen where we got floodwaters anywhere between three months and nine months, you know, sitting and moving and doing things, right? We're to see the crest. Crest is gonna be here, you know, maybe less than forty-eight hours and start to recede kind of a deal, at least based on last projections. So so it's going to be, it's going to feel different for all of us because our last two major floods were months and months of operations and traffic management and degradation to road beds and things like that, that that hopefully we're not gonna see those kind of impacts this time. But you know, we'll wait and see. But, but as it's projected right now, the levels we saw in nineteen is what they're saying that we'll have now. Just not for an entire half a year. Other questions?
I think I'm good. We're just sitting there waiting. See what happens.
Yep. It's, it's a, you, you can notice it in working with, with partners and stakeholders. The flooding is a different pace because you, you know, you know how this set up. We know we have time and we can talk about it and we can put things into play as compared to what we were all, you know, struck with, you know, in earlier in the spring when it's, you know, tornadoes and severe weathers that just come like this. And, and it's just go from right to get out. And so you kind of see that, you know, folks trying to adjust to the operations pace of this is, is a lot different. And so it's a little adjustment, but at, at this point, everybody's so used to doing this stuff that it's, everybody knows what they're doing and they're doing it. So I just remind, you know, all your folks that, that we're communicating all of our information on that Teams platform. Everybody that, that was at the operational meeting yesterday had an opportunity to leave their information to get added to that and add additional staff if they need to. If there's still some folks out there that are lingering that need access to that, have them get ahold of us or send us an email with the people position and their, their email address will get them in there. But that's where we're shoving all the information. So if you're not hearing anything, you're not seeing anything, or you're wondering about something, go there first, check out the different categories and, and it's likely there. So.
Doug, do you know, is twenty-nine north of Missouri Valley, is it predicted to go under two?
You know, I really don't know. I.
They didn't say anything yesterday.
I, I, it really hasn't, and I really haven't tracked that much. I, I've been in communication with the emergency managers. Well, in Harrison Mills and Fremont on some resource requests and needs that they have, but also just kind of how they're, they're doing operationally. We've been communicating and, and so that, that wasn't mentioned as a concern. They were looking at, at some some sandbagging things for some levies, I think.
You heard anything north of Sioux City? Is that reopened or is that still under?
Last I heard, it was still, it was still closed, north of Sioux City. But again, I, I don't know for sure. I haven't. Last, last twenty-four hours got a little bit busier for us.
That's all I was wondering.
Yeah. And I think, I think we're still on the rise towards us right now.
Okay. Thanks. Doug, thanks for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
You got a little more gray hair this morning. Been a heck of a spring, hasn't it?
And be able to get into a contest here pretty soon, Mr. Wickman and Jorgensen. All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Meeting to run to and
Appreciate it.
Hopefully see some of you.
Keep on it. Call us if you have anything, okay?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, John Graham, General Manager and Jeremy Gaines, Director, Microfilming Imaging Systems, Inc., discussion and or decision on digitizing the minute books. And go grab Jeanette. Just a second. Yeah, yeah. John is here. Okay, so we have we tabled this from a week ago. We had some basic questions about scanning the minute books and.
You guys want to come up front here? For girls, I'm sorry.
We, we have a, an invoice here or a proposal of what the cost is going to be for four thousand two seventy-two. And we were just wanting a little more description as to what was involved.
We're going to, the, the basic, the largest part of that proposal right now is just the, the digitizing of those books themselves. Some of them are bound, so we'll have to obviously do those on book scanner. That is the higher cost of, of the line items that are on the quote. The other ones could be taken apart and scanned on a normal scanner, which obviously is a lot quicker and faster and, and instead of taking the, the books apart. Again, the bound ones, we can't do anything with those, but do those on a hard, fast book scanner.
John, what's the six hundred dollars for, for the?
It is a laser fish. It's a document retrieval, storage program. It's an annual cost. Could be used for multiples based on a user. So if we wanted to add additional users, it would be six hundred dollars. And it could be used for other departments other than just for the minute books as well. So, you know, once it's here, obviously you can put it into other departments if we have to, or, you know, if other departments see a need for it.
Does the six hundred dollars have to be with this?
There's another way of doing it. Obviously, we can store it on a local hard drive if you had some sort of storage media that we could put it on. We could OCR, which we would do anyway, which would give you retrieval capabilities, but it would be a little bit more manual, a little bit more time consuming.
How far are we going back on this?
It'll be all of the books that we have.
Which is back to?
Back to, what was it? It must have been like eighteen.
Well, whenever the county was incorporated or started, eighteen-eighty something.
You guys have looked inventory at the books, right?
But those, those early books that were written in cursive, they're not searchable. But anything probably in the twenties, I'm guessing, is when they started putting in typewritten stuff and those, those books are searchable.
So we'll start with the twen- we're gonna do the ones that aren't searchable too then? Is that what?
Well, yeah, just for
History.
Historic preservation.
Okay. And then what do you, you're not doing any, getting rid of the books though, right?
No, no, no.
They'll stay in a vault somewhere?
They're down in the recorder's room right now, in the storage room.
What's the cursive bad handwriting? What?
You know, it's just that the OCR, is that what you call it?
Yeah, OCR. Yeah, we'll not pick up the cursive, obviously. It's typed, you know, anything typed.
Okay.
If it's typed, then it can recognize that word. So if you're working, looking at the Pits and Creek Chinese District, well, it wouldn't be in those books. It'd be in the Chinese books. But if you're looking for some something that said flood, then it would be able to find that.
I understand. Okay.
But John, your recommendation would be to add the annual fee for the laser fish, just so we can search and find quickly if we need to.
That's what I would recommend, yes. And again, as other people, possibility within the county might, could use it for other things as well. We could add additional users. You could populate it with other type documents. It, it could be more than just a minute book type application. I think you mentioned G I S. We'll look, be interested in it.
They're more so for like your drainage, once drainage would get on, is what they were.
We'd have to, right, scan the drainage books, which we need to talk about.
Yeah. But they, again, they could jump on it with another user. Obviously, again, the retrieval would be there.
I think that if somebody from another department was looking for something, they'd just ask Jeanette to do some research.
Yeah.
Or, you know, rather than you paying six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Scanning.
Second.
On that one user, that's all Potawatomi County, right? The one user is Jeanette, would be Jeanette for the minute books. Would be hers, her license for that particular application.
What if the public wants to search them?
Well, then that'd be, we'd have to get it up on the internet somehow, which, you know, we'd have to do a little bit more research on that, but we do not populate.
I'd have to talk to David on that one as far as, I mean, I can search currently right now a PDF that's on our internet. That's what I'm doing now currently. But it's year by year. It's not all of the years. So unless you can narrow it down to a particular year, I'm going through multiple years to look for the item.
Will nineteen-twenty be on the website?
I believe that's what we're, we're gonna try to get everything out there so that it'll all be searchable. But again, it's on the internet. It would, it would just be probably by the year unless we can work with David to see if we could get something on the back end to work. So that then it wouldn't matter what the word was.
Well, we're doing it now.
Right. By year.
With, without that six hundred dollars.
Correct.
So we should be able to do it. All of them without that. I mean, once the documents are scanned, they're ours, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
They're ours before they're scanned.
Well, I mean, they don't have any ownership of those records on who gets to see them.
Right.
That's what I meant.
Because currently what we have, we have a PDF by year. We don't have a PDF with everything.
So a whole year is one PDF?
Correct.
Pretty good size.
Well.
If you knew what the year was, then she could
Then I can.
Narrow it down. But no, it was, were you working with me, Susan? We're trying to find out something about lost voting in for Macedonia. It was sometime in the eighties. And so we were looking through eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six. But if you knew what year it was, then she has an easier time, but.
Right. And typically you couldn't somewhat figure it out as far as the year, but.
That wasn't you.
No, I think it was John that we were looking for.
What, what year do we?
Regardless, it was.
What year do we go back to right now, Jeanette?
Right now, I think it's like nineteen ninety-two that's out on the internet.
So if somebody wants to see nineteen ninety-one, they gotta contact you?
Yeah. Well, and I would have, I mean, we don't have, I would have to go back to the books.
No, once this is done.
Yes. But if we can get it out onto the internet, everything out onto the internet, then anybody could look at nineteen ninety-one. But they would have to know the year that something happened. If they don't know the year, then yes, they would have to contact me according to this software.
Most, most of the people who want to do some historic research are probably department heads, maybe planning or the attorney or something like that. Very, and this, this is what I heard from another vendor said that very seldom is it the public wanting to do some historical research. Not that they won't, but it's usually somebody, a, a department head that's looking for when did we pass that resolution? What did the resolution say? Stuff like that.
Well, I mean, I understand that it might, it's not gonna be an everyday occurrence, but we're shutting people out from seeing anything that happened in this room nineteen ninety-two and earlier.
Right.
That's not gonna, I don't think that should, should be.
Oh, I think it should go, I think it should go out onto the internet once we get them all scanned. That's the problem is, is they didn't start doing the PDF here until ninety-two as far as making full years of the minutes.
Jeanette, would this include property titles, that kind of thing?
No, this is just your guys' minutes.
Just the words minutes.
Yeah.
What you're saying is we're just shutting them out electronically. They can come here like they can do in the past and look at the minute books if they want to.
Just a communication. Right.
Just a simplification. Yeah, yeah.
We just explain it on the website.
No, it, right. Well, it's moving into the next world.
Right.
Right.
Is this a time sensitive, this not, is it?
I haven't done it for a couple hundred fifty years.
David in here to tell us if he can do that? Get those, get those online? I mean, I don't see any reason why.
If he'd come in now.
You put something on there and I mean, we can do that, too, wouldn't we?
Yeah, right now, if he's here.
Walk down there to see if he's in.
Well, I, I mean, we have a question on the table with the second to approve this. This piece. What we're talking about is the next step. Andrew.
Yeah. So once you, he scans the images and they're working to do with what you want. So you can still post them online, which I think is the right way to go. But the software gives Jeanette the capability because when we're But the software gives Jeanette the capability, because when we're searching those books, like John would come in and have no idea when we're looking, we're just looking for something. So the software is a great feature to have in-house, but I agree with Tim that, that you still own those scanned records, that they can, you can still do with what you want, post on the site, and make them available to the public. And I don't think anything here would be limiting your capability to do that.
Once those documents are scanned, are, are they, um, is there any kind of a code on them that only allows one person to see them? Uh, nope, nothing, they're all just standard PDFs delivered back to you, standard PDFs.
On there.
You'll get them back on a hard drive or something.
Yeah, you'd get them back on a flash drive, and again, they're yours, so you could post many years as you want out there, you know, I mean, it's.
They all should be on there.
You know, all be by year. The only, the only thing the, the software allows you to do, if you're looking for a key word of some sort, you're looking for a project number or something, the software allows you to search every book and come back with answers if it's out there. We're doing that now.
With the ones we have, no. You still have to do that by year, with his software, it's all gonna be in a database, so you could search by keyword, you didn't search a hundred years at a time for that keyword.
So instead of taking twelve hours to find a document, you can find it in twenty minutes. Because you can, you know, you don't have to know the year, you don't have to search through every single year, it's all been running together.
Basically, Jeanette would have the access to the database, that would have the searchable file for the one user, and then anybody in the public, after we got them loaded online, they'd still have to go back and search by year by the PDF, but the information would be there, it'd just take them more time and research to do it, unless they want to come in, request Jeanette to pull it up and look for it.
It would make public information requests a little bit quicker for Jeanette, because she could, she wouldn't have to do that.
It's all about making Jeanette's job easier, I mean, you know, for what she does. So.
And for letting the public see everything they wanna see.
So, both.
David is on his way.
Here we go, David's here. Hello, David.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks for dropping everything and running to our meeting.
What's the question?
We're considering a proposal to image all of the archived Board of Supervisor minutes. Uh, we've got records back for one hundred and hundreds, yeah.
Sure.
And we're contemplating, when we get them scanned, it's just an image that Jeanette would have access to. Tim's asked, well, can we share it with the rest of the world, can we put it all out on the internet?
If it's public information, which I assume it is, uh, then that's certainly fine. Um, you're wondering if it, how will we do that?
Right, what would be the platform?
We could, we could use our website, we've got Neapolitan Labs, build us a little tool that would make those available, we could, uh, have a SharePoint link, that would, that would be the simplest way, put them on SharePoint, and provide that link on our website somewhere, that would be the simple, the easiest, cheapest, no fee way of doing that, I don't, I guess I don't know how many images we're talking about, the thousands of images probably, and.
Right, for every year, obviously.
So that would be, that would make them available to the public online.
Yeah, yep, we could put a link on our website to SharePoint, that would be the simplest, easiest way. Or we could have Neapolitan Labs build us a widget that makes them searchable, or something like that, you know, by year or something, whatever, but.
It would need be searched.
Yeah, what, I guess it'd be, we'd have to know what level of searchability, do you wanna be able to search for the word, uh, you know, Hundred and Fortyth Street, and see everything that comes up? That's a different kind of search, we'd have to probably pay for something to do that kind of search. But if you just wanna search by year and date, maybe we name the files accordingly, and then that would be, then you could open them up by that method. Um, but if you wanted to actually be able to search text within the files, um, that might take some, certainly some more effort from a vendor, which would be a cost and some time.
Uh, David, when you, you started here, when, what year?
Uh, two thousand five.
If we, if we wanted to search by, right now, can we search all of our minutes from two thousand and five till today?
Not in one, one way, we could go by year, we have, I think we have each year as a one PDF, right, so you can open up the PDF in year, uh, you know, two thousand twenty-two. And it's a, it's one year of all the minutes, so I could open up that year's PDF and type in my last name, and see that there's four instances of it, and you just go through each one. But you'd have to know the year, and you'd have to go then year by year by year to find everything.
So the user, you know, six hundred dollars a year would allow Jeanette to search them all? Searchable. Again, other than the ones that are not, uh, typed.
Okay, that could save a lot of labor hours, I believe. It would justify the six hundred.
Plus, it would provide confidence that all the records were found, that something wasn't missed.
I will leave my motion as stands.
Um, John, one more question for you, when the quote came in for March fifth, you mentioned that the penned books would be seventy-two fifty each, and now the invoice we have in front of us has increased that to eighty-four dollars, and I was just wondering in three months, what happened?
Our costs have gone up tremendously over the last few months, labor has been just, uh, it's just gone up tremendously over the last few months to get people in. So, tru- pure labor.
Where would these be scanned?
In Omaha.
Where?
In Harney Street.
Harney Street?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth and Harney or something?
Yeah, Twenty-fourth and Harney.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're, not gonna travel a long ways.
No.
It would still be cheaper than, uh, doing it in-house.
Oh, definitely, yes.
They'll be protected while they're in your custody?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And you'll return them when the project's all done, or you'll return the books as they're completed?
More done, along with the, uh, the media that was delivered on.
Think you would take, what's your mark, your mark, John?
I, I would say six weeks.
All for vote?
No other questions? All those in favor proceeding with the microfilm imaging systems in proposal to digitize the minute books? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you very much for coming in, John, and answering some questions.
Thanks, just see how that works out.
David, thank you for scratching.
Yes.
Scannings. Documents. Jeanette, when you pick back there, get anybody who was, Jen or Audrey.
Thank you.
That's correct.
All right, next, we've got some fiscal year-end housekeeping we need to do. Um, got dealing with hand finance and tax officer auditor's office discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize board to sign Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty twenty-four entitled setting forth percentage of funding for property tax credits. And in front of you, you have Resolution Number forty-five twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, you should also have a copy of the letter from.
Becky, that legislation that happened, where they said that none of the, uh, homestead exemptions are gonna be funded at all by the state?
Correct.
Does that change anything that we currently are doing?
As far as this resolution?
Yeah, is state funding any part of it now?
The state is not funding any of the homestead exemptions.
Okay.
Which is your sixty-five plus, they also are not, um, funding any of the military exemptions. What that will, uh, amount to, I, I can't tell you that until we start their tax billing.
But they had in the past given us a certain, it did, some of that, but never, they never honored their fully committed.
Well, that was the credit, the homestead credit.
Okay.
And that was, uh, the legislation would fund hundred percent or?
No, never hundred percent.
Maybe they never did, but, uh, the, whatever they funded that, that was passed through to the, uh, that loss was passed through to the taxpayer.
Right.
We did, we did, uh, it's a plan with property tax. We don't have any alternative.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to approve Resolution forty-five twenty twenty-four. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervising Bell. Right. Wickman, Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Thank you, Becky. Move to discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize board to sign Resolution Number forty-six dash twenty twenty-four entitled appropriation resolution to make appropriations for each of the different offices and departments for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Anything you wanna tell us about this one?
This is just a breakdown of the budget appropriations by department that we are required to pass, um, by resolution.
This is just a housekeeping, basically?
Yes.
Right, yeah, we.
Done every year this time of the year.
You approve the budget for next year, and then you have to also approve appropriations, I'll make that all that money.
Thank you.
And go to the departments.
Motion by Jorgensen.
Second.
By Shay. Any additional discussion? Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
Carried. Next is Resolution Number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-four entitled Resolution for Transfer from Rural Services Fund to Secondary Roads Fund.
So, so move.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen, any discussion?
Is, is this for the current year then?
Yes, this is the fourth quarter, uh, appropriation to.
For, for the roads.
For the.
Okay.
From roads to roads.
Okay, thank you.
Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay. Wickman. Bell.
He's just trying to mix it up, don't you know that?
I keep my weight down.
Thank you very much, Becky, thank you. All right, Peggy Becker, Administrator, Veteran Service Discussion.
It's okay.
This is our change to our guidelines, we have to add a, um, income limitation, or the possibility of an income limitation. Did she give you the annotated form that showed you what page it's on?
I'll get right to that.
Which is page four?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so that's the biggest change, and the way it's worded is, we don't have to take it in consideration, but it's there if we need to. The reason we needed to add it is because we are seeing more and more households with two veterans in it, which they have a potential of compensation of over four thousand dollars a month apiece besides their income, so we just had to make some sort of limitation.
And, and this is a policy that the board has approved in the past?
Yes, this is our guidelines for our county assistance, um, our commission approved this in April. Um, I neglected to get it here in a timely manner, so I apologize for that, so.
I'll make that motion approved.
And I'll second.
So, um, households income above two hundred of the federal poverty guidelines.
For a household of four, that's sixty-two thousand dollars a year.
That, that will change every year then?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, for a household of two, it's forty thousand, which is basically twenty dollars an hour, so. And we're not saying we will use it.
Right.
If a true emergency happens, a car repair, whatever, flooding or whatever may happen, it's just an avenue that's there, we need it.
You haven't ran into that yet?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Becky, does the, uh, did the maximum allowable assistance change?
No, we're still a thousand dollars a month for rent, and then the utilities, the current amount due.
With a maximum of four thousand?
A year, for the use of a year, that was a change we made last year.
All right, we have a motion by Jorgensen, the second by Shay to approve the departmental operating policies for veteran services. All those in?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion has carried, thank you, Peggy.
Peggy, thanks for coming in.
All right, moving to Jana Lemrich, Director, Human Resources, and Lonnie McGuire, Director, Disability Services, discussion and/or decision on approval of service coordinator intern position.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Lonnie McGuire, I'm filling in for Suzanne Watson, um, she's out of the office today, so she asked me to come up to present this with Jana.
And Lonnie is in a different building, you're in a different county, right?
Yeah.
So, so you may not have seen her around, um, but she has been, um, with us for some time, um, yeah, but she's in a located in a different spot.
I'm down here once or twice a week.
Where's your office?
In Harlan, Shelby County, yeah.
Okay.
I'm a region employee or Pot County employee.
Did you get here this morning with that one?
Yes, I did, I had to go around, go a different way, but yes.
All right, so you're creating a new position?
Yeah, which way?
Yes, so, we have multiple service coordinators, um, within their division, but, and we've had a vacancy in one that we have not filled. What we'd like to do is take that vacancy and make it an intern position. The reason for that is, we think this is a really great opportunity with the potential changes that may be going on, um, with the regionalization or whatever's gonna happen with their area, to be able to provide someone a potentially nine-month internship, and for their level of work, their degrees that are required for, uh, to do this type of work, interns and internships are very, very common. So this isn't something that's out of the ordinary. While we see what changes are happening, the work still needs to get done, and we think this is a great way to be able to continue to get the work done, but also maybe get somebody trained, when everything does land, if we have a full-time position, possibly this person could roll right into that, we've already spent time, um, training them. Uh, what we're asking for is that this be a five-ten, which is nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents an hour, to twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents an hour. Your service coordinators, your full-time service coordinators are at a five-twenty-two, if you're curious, which is twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents an hour, to thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents an hour. Twenty-five, twenty-four. Lonnie, do you have anything to add about why we're choosing to take a full-time position and making it an internship?
So, yeah, um, so the, the person that, um, resigned, so we're not adding any new position to this, so we had a person resign, and so the service coordinators that are left, we had, we had before the resignation, we had eight point five FTEs in service coordination, and now we're down to seven point five FTEs, so the remaining service coordinators are then absorbing that one person that left's caseload. And so this would give an opportunity for an internship, um, I would supervise them and do all the training, um, to learn that position, and, um, do some assisting of awesome intake.
They would be out of Harlan office then?
No, they would be out of the Potawatomi County office, and I, like I said, I'm down here two to three times a week, and we will do the super drug supervision and the training for this person, um, making sure they have all the HIPAA training, I, I'm the HIPAA Privacy Officer for the region, so I'll make sure they have all that training, and then all the service coordination training as well.
And so they're not doing the exact role that a service coordinator is doing, because they're not prepared for that, but they're doing a lot of the pieces to help take some of this weight off the service coordinators while we wait to see how everything's going to land.
So you post for this job?
Correct.
How long?
Um, well, we would keep it open for a minimum of ten days.
Okay.
For, same as we would, we would treat it as if we would hire any job, um, if this position works over thirty hours per week, they'd be eligible. Um, if this position works over thirty hours per week, they'd be eligible for health benefits, um, IPRs, so it's really treated very much like a same job, except there's a time limit on this, and there's learning opportunities, so they would get credit with whatever school they're in, and they're not doing the exact same thing that a service coordinator is doing.
And that's within their budget.
Correct, yes, I did double-check that.
Motion to approve, second. That's a region employee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lonnie, you mentioned, uh, eight-point-five FTEs. Is that what the state provides this district?
Actually, we're, we're still Potawatomi County employees, and the state doesn't really dictate at this point how many service coordinators, um, a region can employ. And so I think the reason why we're going to that nine-month, at that point, we should know we'll be applying for, you know, to become, uh, whatever, the ASO or the ADRC, whatever that portion will be. So we should know at that point what we're going to look like in the future with the district.
This is a region employee, right?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the, the state doesn't care, well, the FTE doesn't matter if it's a, um, intern or not?
No, at this point, they have not dictated to us, uh, the employment piece of that. I'm sure that's going to be coming with the ASO portion of it, but they realize the importance of regional service coordination, and, and that's, um, one of the main reasons why they are looking at districting to make sure that people are getting the services where they live, so.
It can be hard to find somebody at that pay rate.
No. Yeah, I mean, it's, it is an internship, so they're also getting college credit, and like I said, it's very common in this, uh, career field to need internships. I don't think that we'll struggle, if we do, we will come back and have some conversations.
We do have a working relationship with, uh, University of Nebraska at Omaha, they have a social work program, and so does Creighton, so they're often looking for, and if, you know, as a social worker, if I had had the opportunity to have a paid internship, that would have been ideal.
Is there anything out at Iowa Western?
Um, I believe they, I don't, they buy a two-year program, so they may not qualify just because we're looking for someone that's going to have a bachelor's level, so.
But we'll double-check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll check all avenues to get this posted. Yeah.
At least check.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Subject to change with the state.
Well, and that's one reason why we created this. Oh, yeah, you're just agreeing with us, I get it. Yes.
This could be a.
It's been a long gone out for twelve years now.
Longer, longer than I've been around.
The arrival of Lonnie's might have been longer than that.
It's been changing since I've been around for almost twenty-five years, it's been a constant change.
Exactly.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve a service coordinator intern position. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
Good.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Hope you get a good candidate.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I say, yeah. All right, next up, Jana Lemrich, Director, Human Resources. Discussion and our decision for approval of the memorandum of understanding between Potawatomi County and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local twenty-three sixty-four, for the nine-one-one agreement for the employees of the Potawatomi County Communication Center, twelve-hour shifts effective July one, twenty-two-four through June thirtieth, twenty-two-five.
That was a lot, wasn't it? This is the MOU that, with nine-one-one for their twelve-hour shifts, we've had this in place since twenty-twenty-two, I think, is when they went to twelve-hour shifts. This, there's no changes to this, it's exactly as is, it was just expiring, and we had a two-year contract with them, but we only did this for one year at a time in case the board wanted to ask any questions or evaluate the twelve-hour shifts. Um, and so when their contract, when their full contract is reopened, so it'll be the end of next June, but we'll start working on it this winter, we would like to incorporate this into the full contract, so there isn't an MOU, but their contract was only open for a wage re-opener this year, so that's why it's not in there. Again, no changes to this. I've spoken to nine-one-one, they said that the twelve-hour shifts are going well. Um, the twelve-hour shifts helps a lot with less forces, so having to force people over for overtime, um, and they get every other weekend off. So twelve-hour shifts have going, been going well, and they would really like to continue this. So this is just a continuation.
I'll make that, uh, motion. Sam's not, someone else.
I, I believe he's out of town. Yes, yes.
Did they, did I see, did we hire another one? Did we get another nine-one-one operator?
On that, I'm not sure. I know that the ones that they have in training, um, currently are doing very well, so it's really exciting.
I was down in town this morning.
Right.
First. Could change out. It's, it's going to be wet, it's, it's going to be crammed, yeah.
With their new consoles?
Yeah.
You mean, sure, while they get through that? Yeah. Yeah, I think they'll be really happy when it's done. Yeah.
And Wickman? Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. And again, discussion and our decision for approval of job description for permit technician one position.
Well, hello again. The permit tech one, um, we, the last time we had this position was in twenty-seventeen. Um, there, at that time, there was some turnover in that position, so it was decided to go ahead and make that a clerk two, which is what we have today, a part-time clerk two, and then take those permit duties and spread them out amongst other people in the office. What we'd like to do as part of the restructuring of the building division for the planning department, and so other pieces will be coming next, this is step one of that restructuring. We would like to take that clerk two position, put it into the full-time permit tech, so bring that permit tech back. What that would do, so your clerk two is currently, um, it's a union position, I have spoken to the union about this as well, it's a pay grade twelve. We'd like this permit tech one to come back at pay grade fifteen, which is what it was, and then once the individual gets certified, they move to a pay grade seventeen. Again, and this is what it was back in twenty-seventeen.
How long do they have to get through, like?
Two years. Yep. And so we, we have an employee in the clerk two, uh, position today, who we would like to move over to this permit tech position. They do qualify, um, and have been doing a lot of the duties, actually the majority of the duties already.
And you would backfill that position?
The clerk two? No, we would not backfill the clerk two position. That's an excellent question. And so what we're asking for, for the, um, pay grade fifteen, is twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour, is step one, to twenty-eight dollars and four cents an hour. And these are July first ranges. Okay, and then the seventeen, just if you're curious, but we'd be moving this person into the fifteen to start. Seventeen is twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour to twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents an hour. So what we're looking for is an approval of this, um, job description, but then also, um, an approval or a nod, we'd still have to put it on a status change form to come through to you, but for the employee, um, we're asking for them to come into step three of the pay grade fifteen, because they've already been doing, um, these duties.
Which is what?
Twenty-two dollars and forty-four, forty-five cents an hour.
So would you go, uh, through a posting of this position, then?
Correct.
You, you, we just do it intern?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to approve the job description for the permit technician one position. Additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion has carried.
And then for the, uh, moving the employee, you know, I had to get this approved first, so there's no status change in your receive and file, because that gets done at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll put a status change form on next Tuesday, but do you need Matt to come and sit, um, in front of you, since we're asking for step three? Or can we get that done today? And then just have the official status change form on receive and file next week with no discussion? That's what I would like, yes, just to continue this process moving forward.
For this particular person?
Yes, for this, for this one person, yes.
Good.
Do you want that in the motion, that it would be at step three?
No.
So what if it's?
Well. It's in, it's in, um, fifteen right now, right?
Well.
Fifteen?
Permit tech is at fifteen. The employee today is at twelve. We would like the employee to be moved to fifteen, step three. So because we're going past that step two mark, is where we need the board approval.
We're not talking about seventeen yet.
Correct.
Do we get a motion on that? It's not on the sheet, I mean, it's not on our.
Right, it's, it's.
Agenda.
We'll do it news. We put the.
Receive and file.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
All right, next, Alvin Hauser, Auditor. Discussion and our decision for approval on payroll status change for finance and tax officer.
Okay, well, uh, with House File seven-eighteen and all that, there was a lot more workload put on the auditor's office, particularly, uh, Becky, and a lot more responsibility, so I'd like to move her up one step from, I think it was nine to ten, to ten to eleven. I talked with Jim last week, and it was just, uh, bump it up one step.
It was going from nine to ten, according to the document you.
Okay, I don't have in front of me.
And it's going from this fiscal year's nine to next fiscal year's ten. So that's.
Moving that one step, because this year, when negotiations went, there, nobody moved a step, correct?
Correct, non-union or not.
Yeah, so, and I'd like to move her up a step.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Did you, um, did you do any comparison with other, tax?
Uh, you, you do that, and it's just.
You didn't do it?
I tried, and it's, uh, you're comparing apples to oranges.
Did you, um, did you happen to listen to the June twelfth, ISAC, meeting, where there are?
Hold the legislative report from Jamie and Lucas, yeah.
They're already talking about removing that responsibility from the auditor, that extra.
I didn't catch that.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
They were changing the, they were changing the caps from, it's three and six now, to two and a half, four and six, that was the only, and there's other changes, but I don't know how they would remove the responsibility.
Yeah.
From the auditors, because we still have to do the mail-out, plus collect all the information from.
They're seeing that it's putting it, um, too much of a load on the auditors across the state, and it's really not doing what they expected it to do.
They're going to make some changes, but I don't think, I don't know where they would put the responsibility.
I don't know if they're going to, if they're going to do that.
I.
I didn't catch that.
No, I, I listened to the webinar.
You listened to the whole thing?
Yeah.
Towards the end.
I listened to it a couple of times, I listened to the original, and the only thing I caught was they were going to change it to three-hundred thousand on, uh, example, rather than a hundred thousand. I mean, other than that, I didn't.
No, I didn't catch that one either, but I did read the report, that, you know, but I still, I don't think they really, uh, finished their deliberations on.
Do we have a, do we have a, a number that it costs us to do that, yes?
To do the mail-out?
Yeah, to do that whole, well, more than they have a mail-out, the, whatever the calculations and all that.
Mail-out, yes, for Masters Touch was twenty-one thousand, that's why we gave you that memo last year when we had to re-appropriate, it's over twenty-one thousand.
That includes the envelopes and the paper and the time and everything?
Well, that was, the, the vendor did it, you know, they.
Well, we, we had a vendor do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a kind, uh, agreement with, uh, Masters Touch. They've done the assessors' mailings and the treasures.
Okay.
Over the past several years, so I just went with him.
Well, I watched, I was involved with the, the whole process and was watching the changes from the House File and had numerous conversations with Becky, and I was just amazed at the amount of time that she had to spend contacting the Department of Management to ask questions, to clarify content, to verify the portal that it had to be input into. There's just a whole lot of oversight that's necessary, that there's no other expertise in the county that could fill that role.
Right.
And with the changeover that we've got coming to the auditor's office, I keep, keeping that succession is key, and I support the, the increase that's been put in front of us just because I, it is a daunting task, it is a whole lot of oversight that's required.
No, she, uh, does a good job taking care of the, uh, taxes and, and, uh, watching whatever it takes to keep doing the job, but, uh.
Yeah, Becky, you're going to be, you're going to be, uh, put to good uses coming here as, as Melvin retires and moves on to Hollywood.
Right.
You're going to Hollywood, Iowa? Hollywood, Iowa, or California? Call for a vote.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve the payroll status change for the finance and tax officer, Becky Lenahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
All right, next, discussion and our decision to approve application for permit to display fireworks filed by Robert Caputo for display on July fourth at two-two-eight-eight-one-three Bridge Road, Council Bluffs. And in your packets, we have a copy of the permit.
So move.
Second.
Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
We're shooting them off already.
Crescent's like a big old bomb out there every night. You know what, it happens every year.
Didn't, didn't until, uh, the state approved them.
Yeah. How impressive it did.
Yeah, yeah, drive it around for it.
Yeah, that's what they used to do.
Driving around.
Now there's a ten on every corner, have you noticed that?
Yeah.
Every grocery store, parking lot, still in the park.
Right?
It's the same stuff in each one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the different nonprofit that's funding or profiting from it, so. Next on the agenda is discussion on the compensation board, and I asked Jeanette to put this on the agenda. Um, in the webinar that Tim was talking about earlier from ISAC, there are some changes effective July first. All compensation boards within the state are being dissolved. The work still needs to be done. We still need to determine how elected official salaries are set and justified. So the work still has to take place. The board does not have to make a decision today. I know that ISAC is putting a sample resolution together, and they're putting a fact sheet together. But basically, if, we have the option to re-establish a new comp board with new members, or we could have existing members on there, and the responsibilities would continue. They're adding additional authority, um, or additional obligations to the comp board to document comparisons and to show your work. I think those are all comments that have come up across the, the supervisors for years. And if we, as a board, decide not to re-establish the compensation board, we have to do that work in-house. It's our responsibility to do it. It's our responsibility to do it. So we've got some things to think about. Like I said, we can wait for the fact sheet to come around. I would like to be proactive and send a letter to our existing compensation board members and thank them for their service and to, um, report what the state has changed so that they don't start thinking that we've gotta start looking at these things going forward, but I don't, I don't know what the best course forward is.
Well, as long as I've been on here, the compensation board has wanted to raise salaries pretty high, and I don't know that we've ever followed their recommendations since I've been on here.
I think a letter, um, and I don't, I think I understand it, but a letter, I think, is the correct thing to give.
Yes.
Them. I just don't know if you, you do it after July first or when you do it, but I think that needs to go out to them. I don't, I guess I'm a little bit indifferent. Does the letter for our representatives come from, from this board? And then the representatives for the other elected officials, does the letter come from, from them, or does it come from this board still? Because they were assigned to their, by their elected officials, those that represent the, um, the recorder, the auditor, the treasurer, and the attorney, they weren't asked to serve for us.
Right.
You know, so I, I, I guess defer to maybe Kristen on that. I would be the best way to do that if ISAC's gonna tell us one, one main stuff. And then I, when, and if there is a new compensation board, or if the board decides to do it, they didn't, unless I missed it, they didn't talk, you know, in the past, the compensation board only looked at one thing, and one thing only, and that was wages. It didn't look at all the other benefits that a person gets as part of a, what I would call, package or, or the full compensation, which is a cost to the taxpayers. And I don't remember them discussing that in the, in the webinar either, so. That's just my two and a half to four cents.
More and more.
I bet there's a lot of surrounding county supervisors, and their discussion about the compensation board were very negative. They were all for eliminating board recommendations, in their case, anyway. They, uh, very, very upsetting for all of them.
So basically, they just shifted the burden back to the board of supervisors to do their homework.
Well, I, I certainly would be all for, all in favor of getting advice, but, uh, you know, let's just take advice for what it is, advice. Deciding factors here.
And, and there's no action required.
Yeah.
At this time.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the one thing is, sometimes, I don't know, it's our first meeting in July. I don't know what the, we have to have something that abolishes the existing one.
That would be the resolution.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We have to do that. I don't know if the legislators were thinking of what.
Thinking.
How to actually do that or what, the, I don't know what the original, that's where we need that guy, come back from the research guy, come back and tell us when, when was the original comp boards? Have they been here since eighteen forty-five or?
I think probably back in the seventies. I think they messed around with it for years and years, and finally came up with the comp board, which was the best resolution to compromise, I guess, what's under.
Well, I'll reach out to ISAC and see when they're gonna have that sample resolution in their info sheet.
We got, uh, auditor's summer school. This week, I'll ask Jamie.
Okay.
You go ahead and reach out if you want.
Go right ahead.
I may forget.
I can harass you.
Well, it, when, when ISAC puts all the information out of elected officials and department heads across the state, it's pretty easy to find. And, um, we can do that, or put together a two or three-person panel that gives a recommendation to the board, non-binding recommendation, instead of being, uh, tied to an elected official and all kinds of, you know.
I think the only thing I, and I, I forgot one, uh, was the sheriff, and they got, they're treated in a different manner, uh, because of what legislation that happened two years ago or something in that regard.
Back to blue.
Is that what, it was some, there's some difference there. I, I don't know exactly what. I don't wanna say exactly what it is. Sheriff is treated differently to some degree.
Yeah, you're required to look at, um, similar decisions to the state control in cities, size of the county. Although there, there's nothing in the back blue law that says shall, it says should, or may, or something like that.
Both may.
Yeah. Shall's different.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll need to have a HR and just few of us to discuss that.
So committee appointments, update from board members from last week. Brian?
I was up at Hitchcock, went over some things with them guys, um, met with, uh, Dixie had a training session in here for for how they code things.
Charter of accounts, Iowa Charter of Accounts.
And that was confusing when you're not doing that every day, but it really helped me, and I wanna go again because I thought she'd done a good job with that.
Yes, it's been a good thing.
It, it taught me a lot, and she's gonna do it again.
It's a lot.
You're gonna go to it.
Yeah.
And I wanna go to that one more time to absorb more. And then Roads Operations Center, they had a Underwood meet for the new road. I went out to that. And then the Roads Operations Center the next day had a first quarter awards. And then I was in here for some, uh, a few other things I don't wanna talk about. And then, uh, of course, we all went to the EMA, and then I met with Suzanne on mental health issues down there. So, you know, where that's all going. That'll do.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, appreciate the, the, the information as being, uh, given to us by the EMA, and I was there yesterday too. So it's an ongoing issue, but we're pretty, very much appreciate that, uh, that, uh, information, so thank you.
Yep. Scott?
Uh, just, uh, the ISAC. Think there was a driving family, uh, alliance meeting also. Okay, they, they got things going on with that, too. It seemed like we might be getting some more money or funds, so.
In the ISAC stuff, they've also sent out that their legislative package, that they're preparing it for twenty-twenty-five. So they're looking for the supervisors to submit
Yeah.
debatable items, so they have until July twenty-sixth to pull those together. I just thought those webinars were really informational. All right, moving to public comments.
Hold on.
Oh.
Jan, on our, on our agenda in received and filed, the sheriff is a specialty pay for another, if he, somebody come on.
Um, not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
What, what's, what's specialty is, do we know that? I think, I'd like to get to the sheriff on the agenda, have him talk to us about that. I mean, we've seen about, at least happening, those come through. Reason won't be long, we'll have everybody else back in the day.
Would you like me to talk to, uh, Steve and Andy about it and get them on the agenda?
Sure.
Sam's online, what?
Sam's online. Well, those Sams are out of communication.
No, no, I understand.
That's, that's all. I just wanna see if we can't figure something out here. And where we're going with it.
Most special.
I can talk with them and have them add it to the agenda and have them bring, um, current specialty pay, who's on it, what are the specialties, how many do we have in each specialty, that sort of thing. I'll talk with them. Yeah, how many do we need?
All right, public comments.
Johnny Anderson.
Now, now begins our public comment portion of the agenda. In an effort to protect the privacy of individuals and reduce potential broadcasting of defamatory and or confidential information, our live broadcast will now end. Information regarding.